Good afternoon. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 12 Council Services and Safety Committee meeting. And we're going to start off with Agenda Bill 7431, 2018 Community Fund Grant Recommendations. And this would be Amy Dukes, our Arts Coordinator, and Bob Harrison.
Yes. Thanks. Amy is going to manage most of the meeting and be able to ask a lot of the questions involved and do a brief introduction of all the groups that are here. We have most of the groups that are on the board, I think, here represented today, do their presentation. And if they're not here yet, like Village Theatre is usually last, they probably -- oh, there you are, sorry. Yeah, okay. They usually come in a little bit late. So, anyway, so as you may recall, the community fund was kind of repurposed about three years ago. Two years ago, we really got much more refined in terms of our application and the process and, you know, enhanced refinement of what the goals are. And a big part of the reason here is that we truly believe in partnerships in the community. This is a great way for us to provide some support for our nonprofit agencies to accomplish their goals. And the real, you know, repurposing of this was focus on capacity building. So, one of the things we wanted to do was be able to either enhance the capacity of the organization to deliver its core missions or provide some additional support for staff to get training or employee development. Because what we found, and we see that ourselves when we compete for grants, is there's just not much support that exists for funding for agencies to do, you know, capital improvements or, you know, staff development or organizational capacity enhancement. And so, when we repurposed this, that was one of the things that we did. So, that was kind of the primary overarching goal. As you'll see here, we had $110,000 last year in this column in funding that we provided. And, you know, the challenge always is, we get more requests than we actually have funds available to support. So, this year, 2018, we provided, we had $241,000 in requests from the various agencies. And one of our goals was to try and stay approximately the same as for funding as we did last year. So, this represents about a 2.2% increase in funding from last year. We got some new agencies this year that applied for funding. And so, with one of those, you know, kind of fiscal restrictions that we placed upon ourselves, you'll see that we had to make some reductions in funding that we had previously provided in order to help support some of the agencies that came forward with some really good programs that they suggested. Obviously, the ultimate determination on that is going to be the City Council when you make those determinations. But, I wanted to give you some of the thinking behind why the recommendations ended up where they were. The other piece that has been floating around for a while has been this, it's not a policy, but it's certainly something we've talked about, which is the desire for the city to not be a majority owner of the organization in terms of its funding. So, one of the things we've always asked for is what the organization's operating budget is. And so, we never wanted to be more than 50% generally of the organization's operating budget. And then, lastly, in terms of scale, we thought, you know, the project budget would be useful information for the council to have so that, you know, you can see, okay, how much of their own fund are they potentially using? How many other partners there may be within the requests and the proposed funding that there is in these projects? So, this is kind of the overview. And then, we'll go back and Amy will do a brief introduction, I think, of the first agency. I think we're doing alphabetically, not, there's no hierarchical order other than, it starts with A. And from there, we'll kind of go through the presentations, I think, how much time do we give? About five?
Two to three minutes.
Or two to three minutes for each organization. And they'll be available for questions then thereafter by the committee. And then, when you do your deliberations, certainly we can do that. I will say, we are in kind of the final stages of the developing the budget for this year. So, the administration should be pretty much wrapped up with the budget by Friday this week. And then, the next two weeks are going to be spent doing cleanup, putting it in the appropriate documents and that type of thing. So, Friday, Monday of next week, we should be wrapped up. So, whatever information you may provide or feedback you may provide on this certainly can be helpful for us as we kind of finally, you know, craft the final budget for the 2018 fiscal year. Any questions for me? Yes?
Before we get started.
Hey Bob, I have two questions.
Okay.
Number one, where do these funds come from in the budget?
So, it comes out of the general fund and specifically out of the Executive Office or Mayor's budget.
Okay. And then, the second question is, so I'm subbing last minute for somebody who's sick. So, I didn't get to prepare as thoroughly as I'd like to.
Yeah.
So, if I miss something, I apologize. But is there in the packet somewhere or can we provide, is there the funding criteria on organizational capacity building? Do we have something formal that we use?
We do. You want to answer that one? That's a great question.
Thanks.
Because it's in the application, which I don't know if we have with us, but if you want to touch on it, that'd be great.
I can answer that really quickly, as long as I'm wearing glasses. Hi. So, the criteria are that the project or program furthers the city's mission to support sustainable, safe, and vibrant community, which is pretty broad. That it strengthens the city's partnership to support the community. That it provides organizational learning, development, and mission completion for the organization. That it demonstrates compelling reasons to engage in capacity building work, meaning it's the right project at the right time for the organization. And then, within that, that the application explains the project such that it has, that they have relevant technical, managerial, and staff ability and capacity to do the project. That they have a strategy for achieving and measuring the impact. That they demonstrate outcomes and strong performance in past projects. And that they provided us detailed costs with good estimates. So, those were the different criteria that were used to evaluate.
And for the benefit of the committee, could you talk a little bit about the evaluation team and who served on it?
Yeah, so we had representation from the Mayor's Office, also from Economic Development, from Health and Human Services, and myself from Arts. And then, Parks also weighed in on applications this year.
Yeah. So, just about all these organizations have kind of a staff liaison. And so, that staff liaison for those organizations participated in the evaluation, so.
So, I have a question around, we had a stated goal that we wanted to get to $10 per resident for overall human services. So, how, how, what fraction, where's the other parts of that $10 than this?
So, the $10 is for human services funding. And so, there's actually a separate human services funding program that we have in place. And it's about a $10 per capita.
So, we're not counting this towards our $10 even though some of these are very much human services benefit?
They're, yeah, kind of human service agencies, but it's not part of our human services granting program. There is a full, separate application and process that runs through the Human Services Commission.
You're saying that that was, so that, so when we said $10, that was only for the stuff that runs through the Human Services Commission, not to include this?
Again, a big part of this was, you know, developing partnerships within the communities using the stated criteria that we kind of have when we did the evaluation. So, some of these organizations, you know, like Leo House or Imagine Housing provide some human services and they may get funding through other sources. But, you know, in terms of this evaluation, this project, we make sure there wasn't any overlap. Another example would be probably Art East or the Village Theatre, I think, gets funding out of the Arts Fund.
Right. So, Village Theatre gets funding from the Arts Fund, but we don't support capital projects. So, their request wouldn't be something that would be considered through the Arts Fund.
Thank you. That helps.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions?
Okay, so.
All right.
All right.
I'm going to turn it over to Amy. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so we had 12 applications this year. They were due at the end of June. And as Bob mentioned, we had an interdepartmental team review the applications along with the Mayor's Office, Bob and Mayor Fred Butler. And so, all 12 applications were reviewed. There were 11 organizations that applied and nine are being recommended for funding. So, we're just going to go in order. And Art East is up first. And all organizations have provided the slides that detail their project that they're going to speak to.
Hello, I am Jennifer Wright. I'm the Executive Director at Art East. And thank you for the opportunity to be able to be at this meeting and talk about our projects. What we are asking for, actually, I guess I should start. I'm new to this role, so if there's anyone that's new to Art East, we are a vibrant leader in the arts community. And we support the community through gallery, exhibition, events, and education. And what we're asking for in this particular proposal is to continue funding that we had last year to be able to support the education manager for our education program. What we had seen in the past was if the volunteers had managed the program, we were inconsistent on the people that we were having coming to the classes and the content of our curriculum. So, having that education manager, which was supported last year, we had a 24% increase in participants in our summer camps. We had a 31% increase in enrollment overall. We were able to support our community's young artists by providing programs like the Portfolio Nights where we had 50 parents and students come in and be able to go through the application process for submitting their proposal to an arts college. And we were able to respond to things like the Parts Department request for arts, art classes for seniors. Does somebody have a question? Okay. Okay. And so, we had funding from last year. We wanted to make sure that we continued the funding this year just so that we can refine what we've been doing and be able to build on what we've done. Make sure we have a consistent face of our program to the community and be sustainable by 2019. So, I'm not sure if you have any questions about what we're doing. We provide this, the programming that we're doing right now is, what we're talking about in this one is really being able to sustain year over year programming for youth and seniors in kind of the basic types of art classes that you typically see. We, in response to the question that you had asked earlier, we do plan to expand our capabilities and look more at more global kind of curriculum. And that will be part of a different grant. But this is just to maintain the face of our education department.
So, I have a question in the summary that we have when we're looking at, you requested 15. It says the project budget is 15. Does that mean, does that mean that you requested 100% of the hours that you have for an education manager?
I think it's a little bit misleading probably in the way that we, that we did it. This is actually to increase, that's just for a 14-hour increase per week for the education manager. Education manager is funded through other grants and, as well as the content is funded through other grants. So, it's 100% of this increase in just those hours. So, a little bit misleading.
All right. And is this someone that you have full-time? So, is it 14 hours out of 40?
With the 14, she's 28 hours. Ideally, she'd be full-time, but we're trying to figure out how to fund 40 hours.
Thanks. That's helpful.
Okay.
Other questions? Stacy? Eileen?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then, At Work.
Stacy, you had a question?
Yeah. Wasn't there, was there a chart that you had up before that said what they requested, what's being recommended, what they got last year?
It's in there.
Yes.
In there?
Yeah. It's at the end.
Okay.
If you go, if you, it's after the, all the individual presentations.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. My name is Wally Tablet. I'm the Vice President of Mission Services for At Work. And for those of you who don't know what At Work is, At Work is a supported employment organization. And we work to have, get people with disabilities jobs in their community. And another portion of the work that we do is for those who aren't ready for work or who are at that age, where work is not a feasible option, we connect them to the community to be engaged in a greater way. So, one of the things that we're looking at and what we're requesting is staff professional development. And that's because we're growing faster than we can, than we can manage right now. And that's a good thing. We hired several people over this past month. And we served 51 people in the first part of our fiscal year, more than we did in our previous years. And that means there are a lot of people with disabilities who want to work in their community. And that's a wonderful thing and challenge for us to have. And part of that, as we bring on new people on board, to provide the kind of services that people with disabilities deserve, to have the good matches, we want to make sure that they have the skill set to be able to do the job really well. And so, with all the different learnings and opportunities that are out there for our state, how can we provide everyone that comes to our door who wants to work in this field? Because this is a really important work that we do. How can we provide them the skill set, knowledge, and expertise which then trickles down into the work that we do? At Work has been serving people with disabilities in Issaquah for over 55 years. We've connected to over 35 businesses in the Issaquah area. We just got another person a job just last week at Papa Murphy's. It continues to grow, you know? Costco is a big employer of ours. We have about seven, eight people at Costco. We are featured, one of our employees and At Work was featured in the Costco magazine, which surprisingly, I did not know, has the biggest magazine distribution. I thought it was like People or one of those, you know, in-touch magazines, who knows? Right? So, this is what we're requesting because, you know, to do this work, there's some funding that's supported by the counties, but it's very minimal. And there's, there's learnings and opportunities beyond our counties that are out there in terms of certification to be, to professionalize this work and conferences that are of a national scale. So, I don't want to take up too much time. I know this is really verbose, but I wanted to capture kind of the important work we do and why it's important to get our employment consultants the skills that's so really needed in this work we do.
I'm just reading through here and under your timeline and your milestones.
Yeah.
It's talking about that you're going to hire one new employment, oh, a consultant every six weeks?
Yeah, so just this past month in September, we've hired four already. So, that just shows the capacity of people are growing. So, just a kind of snapshot, At Work primarily focuses on people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, but we've expanded beyond that. We've grown our program, our DVR program, to serve people with all disabilities. People with learning disabilities, people on the autism scale who don't qualify for the DDEB funding. So, we're expanding that and that's why we have, we're hiring so many new employment consultants.
And the additional people who you are now caring for is a new avenue for you? That was something that you haven't done in the past?
It's not even new, it's the fact that we just didn't have the capacity to do that. You know, we're seeing, as more people call us and say, we want to, we want our son or daughter to work, you know? One of the programs we do is a school-to-work program. And that is to get students in their final year of their transition program, a job by June. So that when they graduate from school, it's not school to couch, it's school to work. And so, more students are signing up for the school-to-work program. Just this past year, we had an 80% placement rate compared to the county average of 65%. And it's helping, I think, families and people think about work in a different way. When we see the successes of people leaving school, employment is now an option, which never was before. And I think that's why more people want to get services from us.
Great.
Yeah. It's great. Thank you.
Can I ask, do you, can I ask, do you know, as I'm looking at 2017 grant award versus the funding request versus the recommendation, when you came to us last year, was it, was it around training and professional development or was it something else?
It was something else. And again, I, my executive director was here last year and filled this out. I'm new to this position. I've been in supported employment for 20 years, but I'm new to At Work in the Vice President role. That primarily was for our technology improvement program to improve because one of the things, again, At Work is growing. We have an office in Snohomish that's expanding. And we just are opening up an office in Spokane come October. So, to have that kind of bandwidth, we needed to have that kind of, you know, WebEx training systems, phone lines, VPN, all of that stuff. So, that was part of that technology improvement program, I believe, from last year. Now, so this is brand new in terms of staff development for this year.
All right. Thanks. Stacy, anything? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. The problem is that they can't hear you. Well, tell you what, if you, well, wait, wait, if you, if you can hold on to one of those and turn it on, if you'd prefer to stand, okay.
All right.
All right. We just, you know, for the audience at home, we want to.
Is that all right?
That's fine.
All right. My name is Jared Munzer. I'm the Zoo Manager at the Cougar Mountain Zoo. This is Carrie McInstry, our Education Manager. And this is Pada. Hopefully, she'll keep her mouth shut and she won't interrupt too much. But, we're here today because we're looking for funding to upgrade our technology and standardize it throughout the zoo. We're basically running on computers that have been around almost as long as the zoo has. The zoo's been around since 1972. We've run primarily on donated hardware, donated software, things like that. And unfortunately, that limits some of our capacity for our promotional material and our educational material. We do a lot of work off-site with the animals, so we'll take Pada here or some of the other animals out to schools, different programs that are going on. And one of the things we really want to do is bring along more educational materials. The problem is with the technology that we currently have right now, we're unfortunately not able to produce it at the level that we would like it to be at. We're kind of of the mind, if we can't do it 100%, let's focus on something else. And that's where we really throw everything into, is the care of the animals and the hospitality that we provide at the zoo. How many of you have been to our zoo before? Raise your hand. Almost everybody in here. How many of you guys have been to Woodland Park or Point Defiance? Don't be shy, I go all the time. All right. Now, how many of you have walked through Woodland Park or Point Defiance and had an interaction with somebody who works there? Couple hands. Now, how about at Cougar Mountain Zoo? How many of you guys have been talked to by somebody other than the person that works at the front desk? No, that didn't work out that well. Anyway. So, some more hands came up as you thought about it, that's good. So, one of the things we really try to do is get an interaction with everybody that comes through. Obviously, we need to work on that a little bit more, sorry. So, the way we try to do that is by being out in the zoo. So, we're out there, whether we're out there with the animals, we're out there giving tours, we're out there just talking to people in front of the exhibits. We really want to give that sense of hospitality because we know that if people are coming to the zoo, they're also coming to this city here. We're not the only game in town, you know, there's lots of great things here, there's the parks, you know, there's Pooh Pooh Point, the trails, everything, the fishery, or the hatchery, I'm sorry. So, we know that people aren't coming here just for us. We hope that by people coming to visit some of the other things here, then they'll hear about us, they'll come and see us. But we also know that people coming to the zoo are going to come do other things here. I go to the Woodland Park and Point Defiance all the time with my child. I'm not going to shell out $30 for a cheeseburger and a soda. So, I always pick something right close by to that zoo. Take my toddler there before I make the trek all the way back here. I can't tell you how many people are walking through the zoo before they leave and ask us somewhere where they can go eat, somewhere they can stop real quick. I don't give any personal recommendations because I don't know who's asking me a question and I don't want to step on anybody's toes. But we always direct them over this way to all the great options. And we just know that if we can spend more time out in the zoo doing that and less time in the office, then we can benefit everybody. One of our biggest issues right now is we're running multiple old platforms across different hardware. So, you know, if Carrie gets something here, I have to format it and edit it just so I can take a look at it. If I need somebody else to look at it, I have to send it to them, they have to do the same thing. Turns one project that only should take an afternoon into a several-day project. So, that's really something we're trying to eliminate. If we can standardize everything across the entire facility, it'll make things so much easier. If you guys have any questions?
Well, the total project budget is $17.5.
Yes.
And some change. And it's been $5,000?
Correct. The administration's recommending $5,000.
So, what would be your plan for the remainder of the money?
We would do what we can with the $5,000. And then, as the funds could become available to us, we'd make up for it eventually. This has not been something that's been a priority for us just because we have so many other things on our plate as far as, you know, animal care and also expansion within the zoo itself. It's just kind of one of those things that we really like to be able to do. And so, that was the cost that we came up with based on the optimal machinery and software for us.
Thanks.
Yep.
Eileen?
Just looking there, reduction of commissioned publication jobs, so that's outsourcing that you're going to now do in-house if you.
Yes.
If you have the funding available.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for bringing that beautiful bird.
She doesn't answer questions.
Eastside Baby Corner.
My name is Michelle Goble. I'm with Eastside Baby Corner. Thanks for having me today. I am the Provider Services Coordinator with Eastside Baby Corner. I've just been there over a couple of months, but I wanted to talk to you today about our ordering system. So, Eastside Baby Corner, for anyone who doesn't know, is we provide anything that children need from birth to age 12. And that includes clothes and shoes and school supplies and things that are donated by the community. And also includes things that we have to purchase for the community, diapers and formula and car seats and things like that that don't necessarily get donated. You don't redonate a disposable diaper. So, we do have to purchase those things. And we work closely with social service agencies in the community who are our agency partners. And they come to us, they pick up what they need, and they go out and then work directly with the families in need in the community. So, we're a giant warehouse over there. Some of you may have been over there dropping off donations. And we take in all the things and then we give it out to the social service agencies. And the way that happens is we have an ordering system where they can come and place their orders in every week. And if they place their order by the end of the week on, by 3:00 on Thursday, we get that order out to them by the following Thursday. So, it's a really quick turnaround time and efficiency is really important. Because, as I wrote out there, our impact is built on community outreach, our agency partner relationships, and effective operating systems. So, if we don't have all three of those things going really well, we can't be as effective as we want to be. And the problem that we're facing is that our outdated ordering system is impacting our operating system effectiveness and it's impacting our relationships that we have with our partner providers. So, we are in the process now of implementing a new ordering system. We're so very excited about it. It's going to have a tremendous positive impact on our overall delivery system and our ability to increase our capacity to help people in the community. It's going to allow us to add new agency partners and programs, which is directly tied to our ability to expand our outreach. And that's going to lead to the ability to fill more orders, which means we can give more things out to the community. It's going to help increase satisfaction with our partners as well, which results in overall increased output, allowing us to serve more partners and families in need. In addition to that, the new system is going to offer us some automated solutions that's going to allow us to spend our valuable time on other critical tasks that we could be doing rather than doing a lot of the things we do now manually. For example, if somebody places an order in the system for a child for a pair of shoes, but they neglect to put in the shoe size, then we have to manually talk to them, call them back, what size are the shoes and that type of thing. And this new system isn't going to allow them to do that. It'll get an error up that says, we have to know what size shoes this child is doing. And so, we do spend a lot of time on that. It's going to save us a lot of time and money in the long run for that. It's also going to offer us some add-ins in areas like inventory management that's going to strengthen our ability to expand into new areas. And this is really exciting. It's going to give us the capability to collect and organize some vital data for reporting, which is going to result in better evaluation, reporting, and operations analysis. So, that can reduce our inventory cycles. It's going to allow us to have more effective forecasting and budgeting. And it's going to allow us to put additional information in there and ask for additional information that's going to help us get to know our partners better so we can better analyze and know where the needs are in the community and where we need to go. Because we have a long waiting list right now of agency partners who'd like to come on board and get things from us. And this is going to be a way that's going to help us prioritize. and operations analysis. So that can reduce our inventory cycles, it's going to allow us to have more effective forecasting and budgeting, and it's gonna allow us to put additional information in there and ask for additional information that's gonna help us get to know our partners better, so we can better analyze and know where the needs are in the community and where we need to go. Because we have a long waiting list right now of agency partners who'd like to come on board and get things from us. And this is gonna be a way that's gonna help us prioritize where the most need is, so that we can make those critical decisions. I put some information up here. I'm out of time, I know, to talk about logistics and how we're going to evaluate it, but I did include a little bit of information on there you can scan. And so if you have any questions about that, too, I'd be happy to answer.
Total project is $288,000. And your request from us today is 17...
I don't have a question about the project, I have a question about the chart. We have says 2017 capacity funding awarded zero.
So Amy Dukes, for those at home, made a comment that they did not apply in 2017.
But in the agenda bill, it says that 2017 support from the city was cashed $10,000.
For Eastside Baby Corner?
Yes.
Is there something in there about capacity funding versus other funding? Are we calling out capacity funding somehow differently?
I'm not sure the answer to that. I can find out and get back to you if you'd like. I know that this is a new project for this year that we're funding. I mean, it's been in the works for several years, but I don't think we've requested anything specifically for this ordering system before. No?
Yeah, they haven't. Now, what that may be, and I don't have that page in front of me, but it may be a human services grant, which may be... So I think one of the goals was to identify all the other pots, because we had been asked that question by, I think, services last year. So I think you may have gotten $10,000 in human services funding, but it would not have been through this program.
Okay, that makes sense.
Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Friends of Lakes Mammoth State Park.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Doot, and I'm the new executive director of Friends of Lakes Mammoth State Park. And I want to thank you, first of all, for your past support, because y'all have really enabled us to achieve what we did. Since 2013, Friends of Lakes Mammoth State Park has been successfully enhancing, promoting, and supporting the park. As y'all know, some of our successes include $6 million in capital improvements. The playground, which opened last year, has resulted in about a 50% increase in Discover Pass revenue for the park. We are actively promoting park events through social media, advertising, and press releases. We have 4,000 Twitter followers and more than 1,500 followers on Facebook. And we really do a lot of the promotions for the park that they're really not able to do. We've hosted four large community events, two were new this year. And Park Adili, our event in July, brought in about 3,000 people to the park. And we also convened stakeholders in the community to make sure that what we're doing in the park is really what everybody wants to do. We are at a period of growth right now. As I said, we hosted four major events, and we're committed to diversifying the funding sources for the agency. And that really means we have to focus on these events. The events are staff-heavy, and so we're at a point where we really need to increase staffing. We have an operations manager, and she's at about 10 hours a week, and my job is a 25-hour-a-week job. But if we're really gonna grow the corporate and individual part of our budget and get away from large grants, we really need to keep our funding. And so we would really appreciate if you would consider the whole amount of the funding, because we are at a place of growth right now. This is not the time to cut us back. We have a lot of exciting things coming up in 2018. And we're really committed to, you know, being part of the nonprofit fabric here and bringing people into Issaquah. You know, a beautiful park and a strong park is really an important part of what brings tourists dollars to Issaquah. And that's really it. We're really at a, you know, we're committed, the board and I are really committed, to increasing the funding through the events, and that, the events are really very staff-heavy. And so that's what we're really requesting the $30,000 for. So, any questions?
Questions?
I don't think I have any right now either.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Kristy Garrard. I'm the executive director for Issaquah Highlands Council, and I appreciate the opportunity to present our grant request to you in person. In 2015 and early 2016, I had the honor of serving on a committee with the City of Issaquah Arts Commission called Leadership in the Arts. And one of the many things that I learned on this committee is that the city needs more art-making spaces. At the same time, or in recent months, Highlands Council has been working on our strategic plan and how we expand programming inside our very busy Blakely Hall Community Center. It's rare that our conference room space inside Blakely Hall is used for an actual business meeting. The room currently serves as a before-and-aftercare space for Grand Ridge Elementary students, playgroup space for a variety of weekly meetups, and classroom space for summer camp programming. Activities in this space, however, are limited to non-messy projects because of its business formal design. We are asking the city for financial support to convert the conference room space by removing the carpet and refinishing the concrete floors to blend with the current kitchen area and adjacent patio, to replace the small wet bar sink with a deeper utility sink and upgrade the countertop to a more durable surface. And then we paint the room a durable washable product, and then purchase a portable soft-surface flooring that we could employ when programming deems necessary, something that would roll up a commercial-grade area rug, as an example. Highlands Council has positive partnerships with the Issaquah Schools Foundation, the Issaquah School District, and Art East, and many others. This room remodel would allow expansion of our collaborative programs to include painting and ceramics classes for all ages, messy children's activities that could include glitter and Play-Doh, and finger paints that we currently don't allow in our programming in that building. And the concrete floor will also make for a safer surface for dance and exercise classes, everything from Bollywood to children's ballet classes to our twice-weekly current Zumba exercise classes. But the pace, the conference room space would still be available for privately renting, supporting local artists who wish to host series-long courses, or the need for a private space to work on a particular project. The improved surfaces, floor, counter, and walls will be easily cleaned, and the room will still blend into the great room when our bi-fold doors open to the rest of our industrial hip lodge space. The conference room can also still serve as a small meeting place for boards, committees, and private businesses. These planned changes simply allow for programming expansion by making the use of the space more flexible and a true benefit to all residents of Issaquah. So I thank you for considering partially funding this project and happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, I have a question. So, obviously, I've been over to Blakely Hall, and I've done a number of events in that main space. Is this a subset of that main space, or is this a separate space? Or tell me how the spaces relate to each other.
Right, so when you're in the great room space, as it's typically oriented, you know, towards that back wall, on the right side are some paneled glass doors. Those doors are bi-fold and slide in a track into a little niche that makes the space larger. So when we do really large events, we're able to make it bigger, but then we can also have multiple programming going on by using both spaces for separate activities.
So you're talking about remodeling that space that's behind the...
That's behind that glass door, right.
So it wouldn't change the primary...
It wouldn't change the primary space at all. So this top picture is the conference room space as it is today, and I brought a couple of other printouts that I'm happy to share with you. And then the other photo in the middle on the top there is just kind of an example of moving from a carpeted space to a solid surface. Oh, yeah, thanks.
Other questions? Jacey, the Highlands resident?
No, I guess the... No, not right now. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Issaquah Alps Trails Club?
Well, good evening. I'm Kurt Leonard. I'm the president of Issaquah Alps Trails Club, and I'm delighted to be here tonight to talk to you about our proposal for our grant request. Issaquah Alps Trails Club has been an integral part of the community for over 40 years. I've been hugely, actually, influential in shaping the natural landscape around the Issaquah, including the creation of Cougar Mountain Regional Wildland Park, working to help secure the Bullet family donation, which was the origin of the Squawk Mountain State Park, working with the state on the creation of Tiger Mountain State Forest, and the donations of land that ultimately created the Grand Ridge Park and Talis Open Space. And also, not to mention, the founding, helping with the founding of the Mountains to Sound Greenway. But we think all these accomplishments, we take pride in them, but they're all kind of forward, or reverse-facing. And so now, we need to look forward to Issaquah Alps as more than, excuse me. So as you can see, Issaquah Alps Trails Club is more than just a hiking club. People might wonder why we would ask for support for a hiking club. Well, our hiking component is really based on the fact that our organization believes passionately that our community benefits from preserving and protecting our close-in-natural areas. And our organization has always had, as a central element of our club's mission, community engagement. That's where we draw our strength and where we draw our influence in the public discourse. As an example, we're the only organization offering free, year-round, guided, educational hikes that are open to all. These are promoted to promote appreciation and support for our green spaces, to promote responsible outdoor recreation, leave no trace, and to have an educational component, both environmental and historical. But ITC is now faced with the same two challenges that a lot of other organizations, regardless of their purpose, face, and that is, in our case, we still have a challenge that there are natural areas still to be protected, and there are previously protected areas to be defended from conversion to other uses. It's a, our advocacy goes on forever, really, just to mention those two points. But the other thing I want to dwell on, because this is really the impetus for this request, is that we're not really reaching a full range of diverse community members and potential supporters, many of whom who are new to the area and perhaps not comfortable venturing out by themselves. So this is really where we want to focus. Our need, and what we're asking the council to consider on our behalf, is we need to structure outreach into the community so that members of different community groups who may be new to the area and unsure of how to safely enjoy the many natural areas of the community can be welcomed into that by going out and identifying neighborhood groups and specifically inviting people to come out and join us in enjoying the outdoors. We have tried doing this on a volunteer basis, and it's just too difficult. It's too slow, and it's not, there's not a lot of continuity provided by that approach. We recently, as many other organizations have done, we recently have brought on board an executive director, part-time position, and that's been very successful, but it's just allowed us to scratch the surface in terms of being able to do community outreach. We've had a pilot program going on up at the Highlands, at the village up there, a family village, and we've had some limited success, mainly because we lack the resources. Our current ED has 20 hours budgeted per month, not per week, but per month, which is a miniscule amount, and that's to do everything, including community outreach. Our proposal to you is, we'd like to double that and put another 20 hours per month at her disposal, so she can go out to various community organizations and say, "Hey, we have got a great, wonderful, open space for you to enjoy, and let us help you figure out how to do that for your group and your family members." So that's really the ask. This would allow us to, we think, enrich the quality of life of the community through getting more people into the outdoors and enjoying them, appreciating them for the gift that they are, and helping us protect and preserve them for future generations. So anticipating a question, we had originally asked for a larger amount than is recommended, and the difference being, there was an automation component of our request, and we're going to seek other sources of funding if this request is granted, and we'll funnel all of that into personal outreach through the executive director. And so the technology part of it, we're gonna use a membership appeals, particularly members with community, or, I'm sorry, company matching capabilities within their employer's organization. So that's how we will fill the significant hole that will be in our budget if we accomplish everything that we've set out. So I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
I want to make sure I heard that correctly. What you're saying is that you had requested $22,000. You're saying that the 10K that's recommended by the mayor's office will still get you to your 20 extra hours per month?
It will, yes. And so the remainder would be, of the technology side, we'll find other ways to pay for that.
Understood, thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
We're gonna skip ahead to Tavon Center real quick. Oh, you're next. Oh, well, then we're not. Obviously, I can't alphabetize. Sorry.
Thank you. I was very thoughtful. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kristin Newberry, and I oversee the business development for Tavon. We provide active learning and community programs that help build better lives for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for your support this year, council. And for 2018, we respectfully request support to install new software. This will help us to enable to continue our capacity building. Currently, we manage our records manually, entering them into spreadsheets. I'm sure some of you recognize that practice, which is extremely difficult when we have over 1,000 constituents to manage. For our organization to remain sustainable, it's vital that we move this information onto relationship management software platform. What the software does is it actually takes all of our information and puts it in one place. So if it's our donors, if it's our volunteers, if it's our members, activities, interactions, transactions, all of those things would then be in one single place for us to use. So as you can see, the project itself has three phases. And the first phase is to clean and prepare our current files and data. Phase two is actually just to install the software and then set up the system itself and customize it, and then migrate all of that data into the new software. And phase three is to train staff, which we're a very big believer in, making sure everybody is well-trained and able to use a system. So the bottom line for us, and for this system, what it will allow us to do, it will allow us to manage our donors and constituent relationships, it will improve our organizational efficiency, and it will increase our fundraising for sustainability. Any questions that I could answer?
Yeah, this was a project that you started last year, was it not? You were doing CRM software last year, I thought?
We were not. We were actually doing a transition to our whole program.
Ah, I see.
Mm-hmm.
So our funding for last year was for different stuff?
Correct. And for significant staff training as well.
All right, questions?
The $20,000 that you're requesting will accomplish all of this or portions of this?
The $20,000 would accomplish all of this. I believe, from what I was given, that the council had recommended the $5,000. Am I correct?
The administration... The administration is right.
The administration's right.
Council will decide how much.
Okay, so yeah, the 20,000 would actually do all of this.
Thank you. And if you don't get all of the money, you get five?
We have thought of that as well. So if we get the five, what we will do is we will actually do the phase one, the cleaning, the technical, and do the installation. And then what we're going to have to do is incrementally do the staff training, and we'll also seek some additional fundraising, because we are very big believers in staff training. It does you no good to have a new system and clean data if people don't know how to use it and keep it that way.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
No, Village Theater.
Hi, I'm Frank Stillwagner. I'm the Director of Development for Village Theater. For those who don't know Village Theater, Village Theater was founded in 1979. We are the largest fully-producing regional theater in the Pacific Northwest. And yes, we are larger than the Seattle Rep Act Theater, Intman. We have, this year, we have more than 20,000 subscribers. We are second only in our subscribers to the Fifth Avenue, which boasts between 23,000 and 25,000. So we are a significant player in the arts in the Puget Sound and throughout the Pacific Northwest and nationally. We currently, as of September 1st, have moved into a $13.2 million annual budget. We have two theaters here in Isquah on Front Street, First Stage Theater, where we started. And we rebuilt that theater seven years ago. We raised it and rebuilt it in its likeness. In 1994, we opened the Francis J. Gardett Theater, which we currently is our main stage theater. It's a 500-seat theater. And then, seven years just before we rebuilt First Stage, we built the Joan and Craig Watchen Production Studios on First Avenue Northwest, which is about a block and a half from the main stage theater. Through funding from the Building for Culture, through King County, we received funds to be able to purchase the land right next to the Craig and Joan Watchen Technical Studios. And we are planning on building a warehouse and artist residency. So when we were here last year, we had asked for 100,000, and we were given the first 25 of that 100,000. So this is the second installment of that 100,000 at the 25,000. Since we first presented the project, which was originally just a warehouse, the zoning and through some architectural changes and things, it's allowing us to put six apartments on top of the warehouse. And currently, we rent from the apartments right next to the Francis J. Gardett Theater. We rent five apartments for six, with six bedrooms in total. So this will offset that rental. And between that, the cost of the annual rental and the cost of the annual warehouse space that we rent throughout Isquah and Bellevue for storage of our props, costumes, and sets, we were planning on funding at least 50% of this project because the annual cost that we're currently paying will be less than a 15-year mortgage on half of the cost of the warehouse and artist residency. So we've currently raised a little over $400,000 for the project. We're planning on breaking ground in late 2018. So we will be, our hope is to open the building and new artist residencies in 2019 in conjunction with our 40th anniversary.
Can you tell us more about the... There's a part in here that says there was a $100,000 grant payable in increments of $25,000 over four years, and that this is the first?
This would be the second installment of that.
The second installment?
Yeah, so when we put the grant in originally and before the change in the community fund funding, we had approached and asked for 100,000 at 25,000 a year. And then in working with Amy and stuff, she said it'll have to come in over a four-year increment, which is what the city has done in the past for us on all of our major capital projects, on the Francis J. Gardett First Stage and the production studios. For all that funding, it had been, it had been done over a period of time at 100 or $200,000, depending on what it was, that was paid out year by year to help with the expenses as we build up for the project and not just all, the full $100,000 in a year.
Okay.
So it's consistent with what the city has done in the past.
Okay. So what you're hoping is $25,000 for four years to get you the total $100,000 grant, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
It was, that's why we have a foundation guy framing it that way. I don't think we made a pledge for $100,000, so I wouldn't quite frame it the way it's framed up there. But I will say that we funded $25,000 a year for, it's probably been 11 or 12 years in a row, where we've had these partnerships where the theaters approach us on these major capital projects. And generally, you know, we've been able to fund at that $25,000 level. So I don't know what ends up on the plaque, you know, that you put up usually on your supporters, but if it's 100, that, you know, I don't know what that is. But that's been the experience, I think, we've had generally with the Village Theater.
Yeah, and it was the 2016 agenda, the equivalent of tonight's meeting, did talk about 100,000 in $25,000 increments. So it is the nature of the conversation for the last couple of years.
Yeah, and that very well could be. I think, you know, we've, again, our focus has been partnering with the theater on those projects over, like I said, it's been 12 years. We've partnered on several of these about 25,000 a year. So my point was, I don't think we actually signed a pledge for that, but we certainly, as he indicated, Amy, and said, you know, if you're going to do this partnership with the city, this is kind of the framework and the way that we've done it in the past. But we can't bind a future council.
Of course, of course, got it, yeah. Point taken.
We're trying.
Eileen?
I've got the form in mind.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Oh, did you... Well, this is in the packet that you have. So that concludes the presentations by the applicants for the community fund. And then I'm just going to put this slide back up that shows, you know, what was requested this year and what was, what's being recommended by the mayor's office. And then you can see some of the applicants did receive funding last year through this fund. And then you can also see that quite a few of them are new to requesting this year. So we did try to get the application out pretty widely, and we're happy that we did get new applicants to the fund this year. So I can, I think I can answer questions that you have, if you have some.
So you're done with the presentations from the applicants?
Yes.
All right, and if there were some applicants that did not present this evening?
Right, so everyone that is being recommended for funding did present. We do have a few that were not recommended for funding, and they have chosen not to be here tonight.
Okay, now I get it, yep. Okay?
And then Village Theater actually put in two applications, and we're recommending funding one, so...
Got it. Stacy, question?
Were the ones where Leo and Imagine Housing invited?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll start with a question around Art East. So we've got 10,000 in there out of the 15,000 requested. Given that this would represent only, I say, a 50% increase in this position's time, can you share a little bit more why we recommended only 10 out of the 15?
I think part of that was because last year it was funded at a larger amount, and the hope is for the staffing positions that we slowly reduce our... The city reduces the support so that the organizations can sustain those positions themselves. So we did have a number that were supporting staff. And just in general, the administration's recommendation was to step them down a little bit so that they become more sustainable, or more organization-sustained than city-sustained.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a non-Art East question. This is probably for Bob. So the total, do we take a total amount of money and then divide it up? Or if the council chooses to increase funding, then it just comes from a general fund? Is that how that works?
Yeah, so generally, what we've done is, when we repurposed the whole project, because we used to fund around 260,000 a year, and then those, what we were able to determine were actually like contracts for services. We kind of pulled those out, and now we separately fund those. And then what's left, the funds that were left are about that $110,000. So if the council chose to fund more, and it kind of dropped that hint that if you chose to, that's certainly an option. And we, when we set this number, when did we go out, do you remember, for grant applications again? It was like summer?
The application was released right around the beginning of, or end of May, beginning of June, and they had about a month to apply.
Yeah, so at that time, we pretty much said, all right, let's stay status quo with a generally CPI increase. Given where we are in the budget today, I think there's a little more flexibility with that because we have till Friday to kind of finalize it. But that's ultimately up to the committee. But if I heard today that you want to make some adjustments, I think we could, well, within reason, make some accommodations to the budget before it gets presented to the council.
And last year, our, was 110,000? Is that what capacity funding, that was what was awarded last year is 110,000?
So actually, that is what was awarded to the organizations that reapplied. There were, there was a very small grant, under $5,000, to the history museums for some donor fundraising management. And then there was a small amount also to the Fish Hatchery for increasing some hours for their executive director. So it was just a tiny bit more than 110.
120,000 or so?
Yeah, I think it was about 120.
So remind me, I don't remember if it was last year or the previous year. I feel like there was a year where Cougar Mountain Zoo came to us, and we also, we chose not to award anything. Was that last year, or was that the year before?
I believe it was last year.
Last year, okay. Yeah, that gets at, you know, I look at this, and I understand we're trying to spread our money more broadly. And so a number of organizations don't get what they asked for. And I, you know, understand that. And some organizations have done a good job on explaining how they would get by with a smaller amount. But I feel like if you combine where we were last year with the zoo, with the requests this year, and with the amount that were, that the administration had suggested, you know, I want to suggest to my fellow council members that we might want to think about an increased number on that. I feel like the zoo is a resource that, you know, we don't... There's all sorts of resources we don't do enough with, but in particular Cougar Mountain Zoo in the last couple of years, I feel like this is, this seems like a really worthy project for them to do and something we should think about a larger number, particularly with the history of not. I can't remember exactly what it was last year. I know I was okay with not doing it last year, but this seems like a beneficial one.
Do you have a mountain line?
I'd like to go with 10 rather than 5. It's not everything, but it's a little closer to where they were asking for. I also think that would be in line with, if you look at the total amount and you think about, you know, inflation and cost of living increases, I think that keeps our, that would keep our total recommendation, you know, current with, in real dollars. Other questions about this list?
I just have a question in regards to Leo. Help me again, why did we not even discuss this because I didn't come to this particular evening?
Correct. You do have their application in the packet that was attached with the Agenda Bill. And they were recommending hiring a development director or a donor development professional, full-time. And in discussions with administration, there was just the feeling that it was kind of going from zero to 100% very quickly. Again, all of these also were evaluated based on the application and the information they told us within the application. So I think the group felt that maybe a stepped approach would be more appropriate for that one versus going to hiring a full-time person.
And your belief is the 35,000 would be a full-time employee?
Well, they were going to cover a part of the, it wasn't to fully fund the position. It was to fund, to partially fund the position.
So I had, sure, Friends of Lakes and Amish State Park. So it's hard to believe how that organization could be any more successful than it has been in the last five years. With everything they've done, all the improvements at the park with the help of the funds from the legislature for capital improvements and all the fundraising for the, for the playground, it's just been the most tremendous success story that I'm just really, really proud to see. And so when I look here at 25,000 last year and a request to be increased 5,000 for this year, but then the recommendation is actually 5,000 less than last year, and that they're seeking money to help them grow at what I heard was a critical time for growth. I have, I would like to see them get their full amount. I mean, they've, they've just such, done such a tremendous job. And so it seems like we should allow them to, help them to continue to grow.
You're saying full amount at 25 or 30?
30.
Can I ask? So can I ask the administration's thoughts on why 20, not 25 or 30?
I think it just got back to that same concept of we've been supporting a staff position and at some point, needing the organization to take on more of the responsibility of staffing. And I'm not sure how many years Friends of Lakes and Amish...
I think it's been about four years, five years. I think you hit it right on the head. So, because I remember that first year when they came back, they said, well, our goal is to eventually make it zero. And we said, well, we don't think you have to get to zero, but we still want to be a partner. I think we totally agree with your analysis. They've been very successful. We still want to continue to support them. But the thought was, at some point, you need to take that step in the, in that direction of self, you know, sustenance of your position. So the question would be when, and we thought maybe this was a step in that right direction. But no one is disagreeing with the fact that the investments we've made in the past, they've certainly been able to demonstrate success with the funds that we've provided them.
So they've, my understanding is way more than met their benchmarks from what, you know, what they were asked to accomplish with the monies that they were given. It's really an organization that's in its infancy and has just, like I said, just been a tremendous success story. So I would be looking to support $30,000. Yes, I agree that organizations should be able to fly on their own after a while, but it's just really a, it really is a young organization. And so that's, that's what I would be supporting, is the full amount for them.
Eileen, what do you think?
I guess I would like to see where, I'm having trouble, we're sort of jumping all over this screen up here, and it's hard to understand.
Oh, your mic, just begin to the mic.
It's hard to understand exactly where we are in our dollars. So can we... So can we like start at the top and take them one at a time and go down instead of sort of bouncing all over the requests?
That'd be, sure. That's, that seems reasonable. All right. Artes, what do you think about the 10?
Comfortable with 10.
All right. You? Yes, all three of us are. All right. At work, 15?
Comfortable.
Yes, that's an 80% placement.
Cougar Mountain, I already mentioned. I think particularly around improving computer hardware and infrastructure, given that we've taken some time off from helping them in the past, I would really like to see us go to 10.
Yeah, and support that.
Okay, great. So we're.
We're 10 over.
We're moving to, we're plus 5.
He's not even here any longer to.
I know.
To give us a gig.
I wanted to impress the bird.
Yeah, squawk here.
Eastside Baby Corner for 15?
Yes.
All right.
Let me see.
Yes, it was, it was, we've been in agreement on them so far, and we're plus 5 over the baseline because of Cougar at 10 rather than 5. So we're at 7, 117.5.
I have a question. So Bob, Eastside Baby Corner, would this be one that's in the, also human services?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, so I don't believe that this type of project fits within the human services criteria the same way that the, the arts fund does not fund capital and equipment requests. I don't believe that.
I think, yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, which is great. Usually with human services, it's like funding for a direct service to direct providers, whereas this is more like for the organization as a whole. And it's not like we're buying $15,000 worth of diapers, whereas a human services grant might provide that same kind of direct relationship for that service.
Sure. Different sources of money, different reasons for funding, but probably is funded through human services funding as well.
Yeah, they may fund a direct service program through human services.
So this is for an inventory management program?
Right.
Anyone who's been out to see their location, they could benefit. Because there's like multiple different buildings around the corner and how they keep track of everything, I'm not sure, but they do, and they do a great job.
Yep. And just to be clear, this is for the, I assume Salesforce.com software, they had mentioned that they're going to need to hire somebody. This is not for that somebody, right? This is just for the software and the training.
Right. So the project budget for this one is actually quite large, and that does include the consultants. And this is actually for the.
Yeah, I just get nervous about these big ERP softwares and having to add people and you hope that you see the benefit, but I am not on the board for Eastside Baby Corner, so it's not up to me to decide on that. But man, all these ERP softwares, I should go back to selling ERP software. Be that as it may, are we good with 15? All right. Friends of Lakes and Amish State Park, so this is the one. So the question is, I would like to, I'm okay with this if we sort of come up with a, I do like the idea of weaning these organizations off of personnel. And I was, I have been proud, I continue to be proud to support their ongoing efforts. But I do feel like we should say that we, I think we should give an idea of at least the three of our ideas on when, you know, they're, let's say, four years in, right? I do think we should reach a point where, you know, they're not asking to have staff paid for, you know, the way nobody else is asking to have staff paid for. So I don't know if that's another year or two, but I, I do think we should sort of give them notice that we would like them to get to that, to the same point as everybody else.
Well, I think they would like to get to that point. I think what we heard, and what I've heard over the past few months, is that it's a critical time where they need staff in order to help them grow, help them get projects ready so they can go out for funding. So I think they're still in that critical growth stage. I agree with you. We don't want to just fund organizations forever. And just because an organization is growing doesn't necessarily mean we help with funding. This is a, like I said before, when the organization first started, this is akin to when Fish started and the city had a significant amount of support for a very long time. I did the research at the time, I'd probably have to go back and do it again. I don't think this is out of line at all. I think it would be premature to kind of roll them back when they are just starting to be very successful.
All right. Well, I'm going to support your move to go to 30, but I'm going to say that next year would be the last year that I personally would want to entertain personnel expenditure in this process. So if I'm lucky enough to be on this committee two years from now, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to, because I agree with you, I understand, they're still early, but I think five years is enough myself. And next year will be five years.
For zero, and then to zero?
For personnel, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we don't, we don't pay for personnel with anybody else in this process. I get why we're doing it right now, but I, I'm just saying for me as 127.
Sure.
That's kind of where I'm at on it. And that's what it takes for me to be okay with, with making, with having them be different from everybody else.
So our request or our recommendation is for 30, not the 25?
Correct. That's what we're talking about. Are you, are you good with that?
With an asterisk after it, and let's come back to it.
Okay. All right. So we're at plus 15 for 127.5 with an asterisk. Next, we've got Highlands Council. I certainly want to give them at least the 7,500, and I think they've been particularly valuable this year. We've, they've served a great function in the candidate forums that they've had for the various candidates that are up for election this year and in a, where there haven't been a lot of public venues for, for that. And so it's, I've been particularly appreciative of that. They seem to have a good plan.
I'm comfortable with 75.
Yeah, I think it's a different room.
No, yeah, I understand, but I mean, as an organization, they're clearly contributing to the community as an organization. All right. Isco Alps Trail Club for Ted?
Yes.
All right. Yes, for me too. Evan? For 5. This is where they've, they've also got a good plan for, since they're only getting 5, they know how they live with that. Yes, all right. And Village Theater for 25?
Yep.
Yep. Another organization that, that I, you know, wish we could give more, but they also do well with the outside community. So they do well with everyone. All right, well, that's, that's it. Now, back to your asterisk. We're at 127.5 at this moment.
And that was for the?
5 for Cougar Mountain Zoo. It's plus 5 for Cougar Mountain Zoo and plus 10 for Friends of Lakes and Amish.
Plus 5 for Cougar Zoo?
Yep.
That would change that 5 to 10?
10, correct.
Okay, yes. And the other one?
Plus 10 for Friends of Lakes and Amish, so to go from 20 to 30.
Which is their original request.
Correct.
Okay.
Good?
20.
Yeah? Yes? All right. I think that's our recommendation to the full council. And it sounds like we're through to. All right, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
What was the administration request? Returning to full council on November 21st, it doesn't give, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the one from last year. This year's, does it have a, does it have a recommendation? Returning to full council on October 2nd? All right, well, let's, you know, because it's budget-related and because we've increased it, I'm going to suggest it come back regular business.
I agree.
All right. All right.
He's running away.
And with that. Stacy?
Just, I think, just the acknowledgement that this is sort of the awkward one because we're giving, isn't it direction to the mayor to put money in the budget? Discuss about it. It's an odd one.
We're going to go to Agenda Bill 7474, which is the inter-agency agreement with the Department of Ecology for Washington Conservation Corps Services. And this is with our own Jeff Botley, Wotling, Director of Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This agreement, this proposed agreement in front of you represents a partnership with Washington Conservation Corps, otherwise known as WCC. This partnership would allow us to address some much-needed maintenance within portions of our open space, city-owned open space properties. With over 1,400 acres of city open space properties, it certainly does take multiple partnerships for us to effectively manage and steward and maintain that space. This agency, WCC, is a program within the state, Washington State Department of Ecology. They employ individuals ages 18 to 25 and give them tremendous education and experience in resource conservation. That experience really provides them with some very specific training when it comes to this type of work that really aligns with what we need, invasive removals, restoration planting, pruning of, and removal of invasives, and really all within a resource conservation approach. So in many ways, for the work that we desire to get done there, a very good partner, a great partner to align with. This agreement, this request for this $15,000 contract would give us 110 hours of a six-person crew. They work 10-hour days, so this would be 11 workdays with that six-person crew. This agreement would be overseen and managed by Matt Meckler, our open space steward. The focus area that we're looking at for this work would be our open space properties along Tibbetts Creek that adjoin Tibbetts Valley Park and as well as adjoin, adjoin SR 900. We think with the upcoming opening of the skate park, there are some areas in there that would be well worth opening up and getting rid of some of the invasives and other intrusive vegetation. Funding for this work is already within our park operations budget. There's no need for additional requests. The agreement, since it's an intergovernmental agreement, is before you seeking council approval. This is certainly a partnership that we in Parks hope to utilize in the future for this very, very important work, again, of stewarding, stewarding over 1,400 acres of our, our city parkland. It's these type of innovative partnerships that really help us maximize our effort. So, thank you.
So I want, I just want to understand, Parks has a fairly large crew that does some of this kind of work, right? How many people do you have roughly doing this sort of work, full-time?
Full-time staff, we have six full-time park maintenance workers.
Okay. So six staff at 2,000 hours a year, roughly, is 12,000 hours. You do 12,000 hours of, of this sort of labor. So this contract is for about 500 hours, 550 hours, or, no, 660, sorry, it's six people. So it's fairly small.
Yeah, total labor, correct.
Total labor. So it's fairly small compared to the staff that you've got out there. In fact, it's quite small compared to the staff you've got out there. So what's the, what's the impetus to do this? Is there a, is there a secondary benefit to doing this program?
No, I'd say primarily, when you look at the value per dollar, per hour, this is a much less expensive rate than what our rate would be for part-time staff or full-time staff.
It looks like it's about 21 bucks an hour.
What's that?
It was 26. 26 bucks an hour.
Yep. But again, it comes with experience, it comes with expertise, it comes with specific training for this targeted type of work in terms of, again, addressing more hands-on deck in terms of our open space area. You're absolutely right. With the staff we have, we do have staff, but certainly the, the work that needs to be done throughout our system, our current park maintenance staff, most of their work is spent on our developed parks, which is not in that 1,400 acres. We've got 250 acres that takes up a majority of their time.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you. That's a good, that's a good explanation. Questions?
Supports the Conservation Corps.
There you go. All right, so, through to in favor? All right, through to in favor, they can go consent.
Great.
Unless, of course, you guys really want it to go.
Consent is great.
All right, then. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, he sure is. For the Senior Center report.
Absolutely. Thank you. As I am getting this report up, I'm also going to invite presenters from our advisory board to come on up and have a seat with the council members right up front. I'll give a quick introduction. I will serve as stagehand and I'll drive the PowerPoint, but certainly let this wonderful group present. Just as a, as an update, we had a chance in June, oh, oh, right up here. So we had the chance to provide an update in June, and at that, we gave a progress report of the work we've been doing since we began meeting in April. We also laid out an outline, a framework, that we were going to start to build our report on. I'm certainly happy to say, through a lot of discussion and deliberation that this group had over the last couple of months, you have the report in front of you. It really represents a tremendous amount of work. This 10-member team really brought a great sense of perspective to a very important question. Where do we want to take the Senior Center? What do we want to do with the Senior Center long-term? How do we take the time now to begin to set the course for what we want that facility to be? I'm going to hand it over to the group and let you guys jump into it. One quick thing, though, as I see Marcy, there were a number of our advisory board members, and I'll let them introduce themselves, but Marcy and Catherine, who weren't able to, wasn't able to be here, as we went through these deliberations in these last couple of months, there was facilitation that was happening even within the group, which I thought was just terrific. I think the experience and expertise within this group really showed itself as, as this report came together. So with that, I'll drive, and you guys present. Once I get to it, all right.
Who's going to kick us off?
Yes.
Well, I guess of the two primary models explored, you know, there was the city model and the NPO model. And we had great discussions, of course, on either side of the fence, and at one point we lined up who was for the NPO versus who was for the city model. And I was the first one on the end advocating for the city model. And of course, I did that because of the experiences of the prior year and a half. And those experiences exposed some problems within the NPO model, which I'd like to just quickly list for you. First, there was the financial oversight, which was subverted in the worst way. There also were serious pitfalls with the wording of the lease and the grant agreement with the city. And of course, those weren't contemplated when those documents were written, but they were deadly when the pitfalls became evident. The third thing I noted were the provisions of the articles of incorporation and bylaws, which weren't in the best interest of the members. And a demonstration of that was seeing the board of directors, whom the members elected, stand before them and tell them they had no vote. It was just ironic that they would do that, but that's how it played out. The fourth item that I recorded was the senior center records. When you're an NPO, you're subject to statutes, and of course, those cover records, financial and membership. And there was a great shortcoming in that area. Also, the directors are fiduciaries and they're. Also, the directors are fiduciaries, and there was a great shortcoming in that area, even though the state provides training for NPO directors. Another item in a similar vein was their lack of understanding of the role they played under the state's Vulnerable Adult Abuse Act. I mean, when you are a mandated reporter or even a permissive reporter, you have to be aware of that so you can fulfill those duties, which are especially relevant in the Senior Center environment where the abuse could occur. Another item was the problem, the zombie nature of the prior NPO, where termination could not be affected. It dragged on for a year and a half. And one of the things that was especially damaging to the Senior Center was the liquidation of assets. The last item that I would like to mention is an understanding of the federal anti-discrimination statute. No member should ever be called a "bagel sister." I mean, there were things going on like that that are just beyond the pale. And one could say, you know, once burned, twice shy. But all these items that I've listed for you tonight, well, they have occurred and they could occur again. They can be prevented by a careful drafting of the Articles of Incorporation, the bylaws, the lease, and the grant agreement, accompanied by diligent city oversight. And so with those words in support of the NPO model, I turn the time over to Marcy.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. After I talk a little bit about the advantages of being an NPO, we'll...
We'll have to have you talk in one of the microphones.
And while that's happening, forgive me, I should have, for the record, introduced our presenters. So Inez Peterson, who just presented, Marcy Myring, Ava Freisinger, and Scott Tortell.
And I want to point out procedurally, we are not making any decisions tonight. This is a status, and there will be, at some point, a council decision on what sort of model to take going forward, but that is not tonight. Tonight is information.
We'll talk next steps after.
Be aware.
I knew you guys were aware. I wanted to make sure for anybody here or people at home.
Okay. So there are advantages to being an NPO, but all of it rests on the guiding principles that we're going to talk about when I get done. So it's essential that the guiding principles are held, and then we would avoid all of the problems from the past. Some of the advantages would be that there's more ability to leverage with another NPO, especially if we were to have one that has existing locations. So if you have an NPO that is in several different cities, they would also be able to be more quick to have connections, to know service providers, to have ideas in order to jumpstart when we're ready to move to the next, whoever's going to be in charge. They could get it up and running more quickly. The biggest financial advantage of an NPO is the, there's less risk to the city. Financially, there's less risk. There's also a perception that if it is an NPO, that they need more money and people are more willing to give. People would know that it is tax deductible. They are also, let's see, where's some of the other, they might also have less restrictions. The service providers might have less restrictions in terms of liability. There's not that whole, they don't have deep pockets like the city does, and so that would be an advantage financially, too. If the service provider, or not, if the organization has different locations, they would also have experience from what they have been doing in these other places, and they may have personnel that they could call on if there's an absence or if something unexpected happens for just a short period of time. They could call on someone else from another location. And they might also have more experience writing grants because they're a nonprofit. Even though the city can write grants or can apply for grants, they might have had more experience of applying for grants because they're a nonprofit. And the general consensus of the advisory council was that the Senior Center wanted autonomy, that it might be more able to do that if it's a nonprofit and not being run by the city and feeling like the government was involved. There's also seemed to be a perception that a nonprofit might be more sensitive to the needs of the individuals, that they might be able to be more in tune with clients, that they would just respond to their needs more quickly and that that would be appreciated. In terms of programming, if there are different locations, then there's more expertise from having done things in another place and then they're going to get new people to do something very similar, but they've already done it before. And there could also be more flexibility in programming in the sense that if the city puts out a quarterly thing of what's being offered, if it's not the city, it's much more easy when you're, you know, we have life that comes out once a month, a newsletter, it's much easier to quickly change things midstream if things are not working. It's not on a quarterly basis like the Parks Department calendar would be. And so that would be another way to be built, more easy to shift gears if one class isn't working or something needs to be changed. And it also might be that more of the public would be willing to volunteer, that they see it as a nonprofit, they, frequently, the financial gain is not as much for those in charge. And I think maybe people that work there think more often of it as a calling instead of just a job when they're working for the nonprofit, and there's more of a sense of commitment if that's the case. They really feel it's a calling. Those are some of the things we came up with. Thank you.
I'll ask a question while you're moving forward. Are there any multi-city NPO organizations right now that are managing, that are involved in managing senior centers?
There are a couple, yes.
In King County or Western Washington?
In King County. There's a couple of community centers that are managed by the same, by the same agency.
Organization.
Yep.
Okay. Stacy?
Which ones are they?
Boy, Sound Generations is the name of the agency. They currently manage Carnation, as well as a number of other senior centers that are escaping my mind right now.
The mention was made earlier about guiding principles. The guiding principles are the backbone of what let us come to the conclusion that either model would work very effectively. And the first guiding principle is transparency and oversight. It is evident from the recent history at the Senior Center that there is no desire to repeat hurtful experiences and difficult situations that took place in the recent past. Transparency would be evident in either model, and it would have to be worked at. We know that the city develops budgets and maintains budgets and monitors budgets and other things on a continuous basis. It's possible for an NPO to do that because we've seen it working in other facilities that we visited, but it would have to be very closely looked at in either case. And people would need to be held accountable in either case. There is training for boards and commissions, regardless of the model, and so people can be instructed into what their requirements are and what their legal obligations are. Budgets, which are going to be addressed later on in this discussion, are something that the city certainly has experience in developing, and council has experience in determining what is done with those budgets, how the money is, funding is allocated. And an NPO can do that as well, again, with input from the city and monitoring and advice from the city. Partnerships and collaboration are something that can be accomplished in both models. The former model, or the former, the model that we used before, the NPO, was one that involved other organizations in the community, so hospitals and various groups would come in and make wellness presentations and have classes available to people. The Art East right now is working on some programs at the Senior Center, so there's collaboration on the cultural and art side of community activities. But we came up with lists that were very easy to generate, but I can't replicate them right now. There's lots and lots of opportunities for partnerships and collaboration. Oh, we have, the center has had a relationship with the food bank and with Isaguas Friends of Seniors and other local organizations. Cultural focus on customer service is one that is a paramount responsibility or need, and that is in either model. In the city, there is very obviously an understanding that customer service is extremely important, and that's just ingrained within the city's culture. It manifests itself in very, in lots of different ways. NPOs can do the same thing. They have to be willing to do that, and they have to have someone tell them that that is their obligation and their commitment. But in both cases, there's a very good possibility of having people provide excellent customer service.
Thanks. So the next guiding principle was a variety and mix of programs and services. And the Senior Center really will only be as successful as the programs and services that it can offer the members. And there was the Aging in Issaquah Community Engagement Findings Report, and the, they had some recommendations for programs and services, and we validated those in our work, in our group's work. The number one and two needs were transportation, both to and from the Senior Center for shopping and errands, as well as meals and nutrition. Right now, there are two days a week of meals, and they're very well-attended, about 50 participants for each meal, and, but the request would be to move that to five days a week. Aside from the nutritional value and the benefit, there's a benefit of community that creates, and where the center's been and where the center can go, you know, that bringing together of all those folks, you know, for a community meal is a very, very important part that we think can help the community flourish in the future. In addition, there were a variety of fitness classes, technology classes, trips and outings, enrichment classes, including the arts and cultural classes. Tonight I'll add the zoo. I think that that, that was one we didn't discuss, but I think that there was a great opportunity there. And then there's some variety of health services and classes, including cognitive and mental wellness programs. And, you know, really, the focus on a variety of mix of programs and services can be accomplished either in a city-run model or in an NPO, but it's really a guiding principle of what's required. The next guiding principle is creativity, agility, and innovation. The, you know, this, the focus has to be for the future to just get more creative. The demographics are changing. It's becoming, we'd like to see a younger demographic at the Senior Center, you know, but we still, would still like to see the older demographic as well. So, you know, there needs to be an innovative approach to managing that. And then finally, coordination with city facilities. We've got some wonderful resources here in Issaquah. You know, we've got the Tibbetts Manor, you know, and you could, you know, because conceptually you could have lectures there, or in the Pickering Barn, you could have the 50's Dance, or in the community center, you can move exercises should the space not be available in the Senior Center because it's being used for other things, a pool as well. And then finally, the addition of the skateboard park would be a great, a great add for the Senior Center. You know, you could think about all the opportunities there. So, those were the guiding principles, excuse me.
And on for the walker races.
Yeah, absolutely. So, that brings us to the budget. So those are the guiding principles. We all really agreed upon, and we could all rally around all of those guiding principles, whether or not it's a city-run or NPO. If we move on to the budget, you know, it's important that the Senior Center be supported financially by the city in either operating model. You know, the support can occur in multiple ways: direct dollars, you know, facilities, maintenance, utilities, the Gold Pass program, and then also revenues from utilization of the facility and for trips and services and programs that are offered. The budget does directly correlate to a spectrum of programs and services that can be provided. So, you know, fewer dollars equals fewer programs, and the more dollars we have, obviously we can do more programs and services with them. And the advisory group is recommending a package of financial support in the 200 to 300 K range, above and beyond the facilities and maintenance items that we talked about. And the range is really based upon a cost per senior in other cities. So we did some analysis, and you'll see it in the backup, but, you know, Redmond was almost $32 per senior that's living in the city, based on the 2010 census. Kirkland is almost $26 per senior. And Issaquah, at the current 164 K funding level, is about, is under $19. So there's a big difference in the, in the amount of funding that, you know, per senior, on a per senior basis. So that's why we recommended that range.
So if I, if my math is right, somewhere around 240 would put us comparable to those cities. 240 K would get us to around 30 bucks per senior. If 160...
We have about 8,700 seniors, so that would be about, your math would be almost 270 K.
Got it.
I just want to point out one comment, if I might. In the prior year, we had transportation. We had the three vehicles, and there was an employee at 21,000 a year who helped transport the seniors around. In 2018, we haven't had any transportation in that similar vein.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Stacy?
Sure, I do. I have a couple of questions. One of the statements in here about the operational modern governance about the city operation model, it says the cons within this model are the perception that the city is not as well-positioned to accept donations, grants, and I think we already heard that. Then there's a separate part of that said, "And the city's a little more risk-averse in terms of programming within the facility." Can you talk about that?
Yeah, I think as a group, we discussed this. Really what that means from a risk management standpoint, as we work through contractually what we need to do as a city, contractually, when someone comes in to provide a program and service, our risk management lens might be a little more averse to trying some things that, as opposed to a third-party operator, a nonprofit, might be a little more willing to offer services or partner with someone with a smaller amount of insurance, et cetera.
So does that mean that it's potentially more difficult for the city to have certain programs that they might want to provide?
Yeah, so the bottom line would be, yes, it might be a smaller amount of services or harder for a service provider to meet the city's insurance requirements or the risk management requirements. risk management requirements of the city.
Of an example?
Katie, my, that's all health, was that one of the last?
Yeah, I think there are some examples as we reached out to existing providers of the facility and offered services. In some cases, those providers weren't comfortable or weren't able to meet the insurance requirement of the city. So, yep.
And then, the other question I had is, it says regardless of operating model, it will take more than the current annual support of 164,000 to achieve the list of recommended programs and services listed above. So I think when you first came on board, or when we first started talking about this, I had mentioned that Wenatchee Senior Center, and I had heard, and I don't know if it's true because I haven't, my father-in-law's been there, but I haven't been there, that it is completely self-sustaining and doesn't receive city money, and it has, I believe, supported by maybe a thrift store next door and maybe other funding. And so, is, so, did we look at that? And then if not, why not? And then if, and do we know for sure that it takes city funding? Because if there are senior centers that don't require city funding, we probably should look at those.
Yeah, Wenatchee's a slightly different model. It's a private building, private nonprofit group. They do, within their budget model, they do receive public grant dollars. So part of their budget is public support, public funding. What we found, certainly closer to home, within the Pugetstown area, any publicly-owned senior center that's operated either by a nonprofit or by the city, there is a public contribution of some kind, whether that's through direct city funding or public grant or free rent.
So that could be considered part of the city financing or funding of it would be property, you know, similar to what I suppose had before?
Precisely, and as a group we talked about this a multitude of different ways, but certainly understanding what that public support could be, both cash and as well access to building, facility maintenance, you know, utility payments, you know, a number of ways that public support could come through.
Quantify.
If I could interject here, I believe running a thrift store would not be allowed by an NPO. We researched that before. And although some are doing it, they're doing it under the wire. If it was known that they were, the state might pull their NPO status.
So, and I think, thank you for that, and I do remember that conversation, but I think my point was that, my understanding was that they weren't getting any city funding, and so I was curious at how, so I don't know that my information's correct, but it was a million-dollar budget, very little if no city funding, and so I was curious how they were to make that work. Certainly, we don't want to do anything that's involved in any organizations raising money illegally. I just don't have any idea how they're raising their money, so that's really where my curiosity is.
I could find that out specifically, what, I mean, of that million-dollar operating budget, how much of that comes from some type of public support?
And how they raise the rest of their money would be interesting.
Exactly, yep. There's many creative ways to generate revenue, absolutely. But I think through and through, as a public facility, there is some degree of public support that occurs with these spaces.
There is, one of the other members, Susan, the State Council on Aging, who is from East Wenatchee, I believe, and she said that the senior center receives somewhere around $5,000 from one municipality and then $4,000 from the other. So it's a very small amount of direct municipal funding. They have year-round fundraisers in that privately-owned building, and they hold dances, they have dinners, they do all sorts of events there for which they receive rent and are able to use that. And I believe that they, I believe that they have a thrift store as well, but they have lots and lots of activities to raise funds.
Thanks, Anna.
Eileen?
Jeff, what is the one-year budget for this center?
Currently?
Posed. So if we, you know, to bring this up to standards and to get everyone back in there, what are we looking at needing in order to make this a successful senior center?
It's a great question, and one we don't yet know, in that, again, as you recall, as we've made this, as we're going through this process of transitioning to a new future, we're operating at $164,000 of city support for roughly a 200, a little over $200,000 budget. As we look at the future and whether we want to proceed with a, how we want to operate, whether we want to operate in seeking a third-party partner or whether we want to directly operate as a city, we really see as a next step in this process. We have not, it'd be very difficult to generate a specific or trying to identify a specific budget without understanding some of the framework with which we want to proceed as operating this facility. So it's a bit of a chicken and the egg.
Right now, 164 K is what is being, what is it being used for? It's not paying the rent, it's not paying the...
So that's a great, that's a great point. That is paying for direct city operations. The city's also obviously paying facilities maintenance. That's not included in that $164,000. The city is contributing and paying for the existing debt service that's on the building, and that's in a separate, so the city's support of the senior center, I guess is what I'm saying even currently, is housed in different parts of the city budget. If we were to pull those all together, we're probably at a $250,000-plus degree of support right now for operating that senior center currently.
So what's the timeline look like? We've got this little budget thing coming up. This seems to be something that we'd want to understand in coming up with the 2018 budget, so...
Great question. So as we discussed in June, this reality of likely needing to decouple, decouple from the 2018 budget process and this decision for how we want to operate the facility long-term. So we are preparing a budget request to the mayor's office, assuming interim operation is continuing into 2018. We anticipate with the report done and the mayor also getting this report and evaluating this report, likely bringing forward in the next month or two to Services and Safety a recommendation that would begin this policy discussion on how we might want to operate. Either operating model would take multiple months to work through, if you allow me. If we were to consider a third-party operator, getting an RFP out, beginning a selection and interview process, then a negotiation process, we're well into, well into 2018. So we're assuming budget-wise, this continued interim operation by the city until we're really ready for that long-term operation to move forward.
So I understand, and I think I can support that decoupling. I'm not sure if I'm super excited about sort of blank-checking it through the end of 2018. I feel like this process really, it got started, what, March? Was that the timeframe when things really started getting ramping up? Feels to me like something around a year, maybe a little bit, maybe a year plus, but when we get to budget, I would feel more warm and cozy if we had an idea of sort of timeline that we expected to be able to get to resolution. Not having a specific recommendation, but knowing that we'd like to get this resolved to my way of thinking, certainly no later than, you know, June timeframe, mid-year, but I'm one of seven.
And we would anticipate, even in that ask, not operating as an interim operation for the full year? So I guess I'm agreeing with your desire and interest to move this decision process through and transition to whatever that long-term operation is. Knowing whatever, wherever we are in that budget year, there's likely a budget adjustment or a budget transition that would need to happen for the remainder of 18.
Question?
Yes. So Jeff, a minute ago you said, if you take the 164, which doesn't include maintenance, and you include all the other services that the city's providing, we're probably at 250-ish, you thought? And then in the report it talks about, or we talked about tonight, a budget ask of two to three? So does that mean the total expenditure would be 250 plus the, sorry, it would be whatever the difference is between 164 and the budget ask, but then if you also include everything else that got us up to the 250? You see what I'm saying? Is it really a 200 to 300 ask or is it... I think what I would like to see at budget is all-in. What is the city putting all in?
So again, this report is addressing, is trying to identify anticipated budget for long-term operation. That 200, $300,000 range as a group and a staff developed as a target would be a all-in type range, meaning how the city supports that facility could happen, could occur in multiple ways. Could be cash, it could be providing facility maintenance, it could be...
We're already there, I mean...
Correct, correct.
But we wouldn't have to budget for no rent? So, see what I mean? I mean, if we're, so what's the total, what is it, what does it cost? Not just what the, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but not just like dollars, but what we're providing in kind services and...
Forgive me for not being able to answer that directly because we don't know yet. We don't know until we, again, if we're going to find a third-party partner, a nonprofit partner, finding out what they're bringing to the table, finding out what they need, finding out what we can provide, negotiating that agreement, finding out what that financial partnership is, I don't know what...
I'm just talking about budget? We're talking about budget with what the request is for next year?
Station keeping, right?
For 2018?
2018, what the actual total all-in is. So not just the cash amount, but what it's costing us for maintenance of the facility, and does that make sense?
With no change, right? If we just stayed the course?
Just continue with interim operation. You're saying, you're wanting to know what that specific number is to take...
Right.
I would need to, I would need to find all those levels of support in the different parts of the city budget and be able to combine those to give you what that number is. I do know, as we're presenting the budget request, department request to the mayor, we have made some additional requests for some additional support to address some of the program and service needs, and I know that's being considered and will, again, be presented when the mayor presents a budget to you.
And I think some of the cities that we were also giving you prices for per person, they also were not paying rent. They were, you know, the buildings were as they have been here in Isaguas.
Thanks.
Thank you. Eileen? Questions? Any questions? Well, this was very, very informational. I really appreciate all of your comments, and the form that this came in today was a really good education as to where the thinking is at, and I look forward, I applaud all the work that your group has done so far, that you are doing a good job in bringing clarity to a situation that last year was so steeped in lack of clarity. So it's really a nice day, so thank you.
I just want to plus-one that and say I'm glad I had an opportunity to hear you all tonight. I didn't, I'm non-services, but I'm glad that I got to be here. This is very informational. Thank you very much, and thanks for all you've done, work you've done.
I can just add a thank you as well, and a few quick notes. A great group to work with, and again, I can't, I can't overemphasize the somewhat complex nature of how we try and weave and define what a long-term future is, and I think the expertise and the perspectives that this group gave really has helped us and will continue to help us as we move into the policy discussion. I too, I want to give a thanks to our city staff, who, as we're in this period of in-between this flux, we've gladly accepted this opportunity to manage that facility on an interim basis without any additional staff, sort of taking our existing staff and reorganizing a bit. Katie Moller's done an amazing job, as well as the team there. I want to give a thank you for Katie, because as you may or may not know, Katie is transitioning to another job with another Isaguas agency beginning in October, and I just want to publicly thank you, Katie, for the flexibility, the professionalism, the can-do innovation that you brought to, again, taking a rather, a facility that had some recent history that was pretty high on emotion, and I think, in fact, I know, we're transitioning that facility into a much brighter current state and a much brighter future. So thanks for letting me say that.
Great. Anything to give to the order from my fellow council members? All right, with that, we adjourn. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, everyone at home.